Call this Village of Green Hills Council meeting to order for June 23, 2020. Clerk call the roll.
Okay, Halter.
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Metz?
Here.
Osmanoglu?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Okay, we have prayer by Maria Walther.
Dear Lord, please protect all of our citizens in the village and all our council and all our legislative kind of body here, the police, the fire department, from everything that is ill, like pandemic and things like that. Please, oh Lord, have mercy on us and have anybody that comes in front of us to act and present every problems that they have with thoroughness and with humility. And please, oh Lord, let us all act in anything that we do here to be in accordance with you, oh Lord, and make us, everything that we do, to your liking. And we pray that this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we've got the minutes for the regular council meeting of May 26, 2020. Any corrections? Hearing, none. Minutes stand approved. We have no public presentations. And this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thorough and thoughtful consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers. And we have no one here to speak.
I received an email today. No?
Nope.
Okay.
So, actually, due to an error, a staff member did advise somebody called up that they could email a comment in. So I'll have the manager read that. But if, in the future, if you cannot attend the meeting, feel free to contact me or feel free to contact the manager. If you've got a concern, we'll review it, be sure to have a contact back so we can get back to you with the answer. But from now on, now that we're not doing Zoom meetings, we will expect you to show up if you've got a comment that you want to address to council. Do you want to read the one, the one that we've given them permission to send it in?
All right. Thank you. Should I try to talk into one of these?
Yeah.
Okay. This is from Monique Mason-Halter, 154 Junefield Avenue. According to lawyer Andrew Campanelli, local governments like ours are not powerless to regulate and deny small cell installations. I've provided statements he made about that during the 5G summit held June 11, 2020. Video link provided below. Start at the 43-minute mark. Every day my phone rings and someone is upset because without, with the 5G rollout, they are looking to put facilities in much closer proximity to people's homes. Typically, it's involving a cell tower or a DAS node as close as 20 feet to someone's child's bedroom window, and this is going on across the nation. In fact, as we speak, the major players in the wireless industry are looking to install hundreds of thousands of these. Basically, I come in and I do what I need to do to defeat the applications to prevent the single installations. Now people are calling on me to enlighten their local governments and to dispel misinformation about misinformation because misinformation is one of the wireless industry's greatest tools at this juncture. In connection with the 5G rollout, they are more than ever before trying to mislead local governments to believe that under the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, local governments no longer have the power to regulate the placement of wireless facilities. That's completely false. So individuals and groups and even municipalities are hiring me to do municipal ordinance review. So I look at their ordinances and then I recommend changes which, number one, give the local governments the maximum power to control the placement of wireless facilities. And number two, make sure that when they render zoning decisions to deny an application to install wireless facility, they do so in a manner which avoids any potential violations of Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. So, number one, the decision stands up, and number two, they can't get sued. Finally, I also give them assistance in enacting regulations to protect their citizenry from, quite frankly, exposure to illegal excessive levels of RF radiation. Unfortunately, what the vast majority of the country doesn't know is that with respect to the 5G rollout, virtually all of the wireless facilities are essentially unregulated. What I mean by this is that when they are built, the FCC has no idea where they are and has no idea what level of RF radiation they are emitting. That's because any facility under 199 feet doesn't have to be registered with the FCC. And with regard to RF radiation, they are exposing people to the FCC unless it receives a complaint. They never test the facilities and never require the owners to test them.
Okay. All right, moving on. Reports of village officials, Municipal Manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. First, I wanted to let all council know that a public hearing that planning commission was going to have right, right as the virus hit, has been rescheduled for Tuesday, July 7. It will be here in this room at 6:00 PM. These are our zoning text amendments that we're anxious to start the review process for that. And then after planning commission has, they say their public hearing and discussed it, they will be making a recommendation to this body, and you two will be conducting a public hearing. But this will be the one in front of the planning commission. So that's being advertised right now. Also, I wanted to let you know that the Winston Road project is moving along really well. One of the things that we hear the most about is, why are the lanes so much narrower? Actually, they aren't. I think what's going on is people are seeing the curbs, they're like, what, 18-inch curbs? It's kind of creating a tunnel effect. But in actuality, the road's been widened, and both the northbound and the southbound will each be a foot and a half wider than they previously were. And that includes the median. The median strip itself goes back to a discussion we had. You know, we were anticipating that to be a really nice image for the village to have in that block. That also goes back to the comprehensive plan. It was a recommendation at that point, too. So we're excited to be having that be part of the project as well. Still on schedule, traffic's been good, and we're looking at that end of the July time period for everything except the traffic lights, of which we didn't have one taken out yesterday when a large load came through and took out the traffic lights. A little larger, I guess, than they anticipated it would be. I also want to address tonight the fact that the village has been operating under coronavirus restrictions that were issued by the state of Ohio. And as you all know, these restrictions have impacted our concerts and really all of our other events. They're all still up in the air and our operations and everything. As recently as yesterday, I spoke with the Board of Health, and they confirmed that the director's updated and revised order for business guidance and social distancing does not allow for large outdoor gatherings, so our concerts are still not permitted.
That's 10 or more.
Right. Yes, yes. That's the definition. These restrictions apply to everyone, not just the village. So, quite frankly, it was very surprising and very disheartening to learn about a resident who sponsored a weekend of events on the commons over a recent weekend. The resident and others set up music in the gazebo and somehow accessed the electric panel, turned on the very switch that they needed to power their equipment that evening. Typically, the power's only made available if the facilities have been reserved, which were, they were not. The next morning, at my direction, not the council members, but at my direction, the electric box was secured. And surprisingly, that evening, a generator was brought onto the commons for yet another gathering. So both gatherings violated village policies. The individuals who coordinate these events know full well that the village has policies in place that they did not follow. We do this, we have a form that we use for the facility rentals. We do this for a couple of reasons. First, for insurance purposes. Second is to hold people responsible for the costs that may be incurred by the event, if there are any, if there's any damages. And the electric, that is something that we charge by the hour. I think it's $10 an hour for events. It's also a useful process to ensure that two people aren't setting up an event at the same time. So, you know, it's kind of a courtesy to check to see if there are any other events being scheduled. So both gatherings also violated the state order. My reason for mentioning this evening is to be sure that everyone understands that any and all future violations will be addressed. The health department has asked that we send the police to issue a second-degree misdemeanor citation related to the enforcement of Higher Revised Code, Section 37 and 1.352. So, that's what I have to say. No questions?
Anything else?
No. For now.
Okay. Didn't know if you had some other notes there.
Nope.
All right. Comments or questions?
I have just a couple random questions about updates. I've gotten some questions from residents about the batting cages. Can you address what the update is on the batting cages and the old ones that used to be on the tennis courts, the process there?
Okay. Those are the batting cages. Those are the only ones that have ever, to my knowledge, been in the village. And they're currently in storage. Towards the, what, prime middle of last year, I think we were, we had moved them in anticipation of the pickleball resurfacing, which did get done. And we had a contractor ready to pour concrete pad over the park area alongside one of the ball fields there for the batting cage. The contractor never got to that project. We were past the season, so I canceled that order, and they are still in storage at this point in time.
Plus, the Green Hills League, baseball leagues didn't play this year, so.
Yeah, I don't think anybody did anything.
No. What, Finney Town was the closest one that they had.
I think sports just sort of started. I'm kind of losing track of when everything started, but I think contact sports just started. My new spoils just started, what, June 1st? So it's, yeah, pretty well shot everybody's season.
Okay. And I know the answers to most of these. I'm simply asking them because residents have approached me for them just to get it on video so everybody knows. And then grass cutting enforcement, as it pertains to the school, they go through the same process that.
Correct.
Okay. I have had questions about the digital sign, and Jeff can also address this a little bit, but the reasoning behind installing the digital sign and the history of it as far as installing a sign for the shopping center. Residents feel that it's the duty of the shopping center owner to do it. Could you just address that so that it's restated?
Well, can I go first? Because, well, a few things. You cover a lot around there, so let me, I don't know if I'll answer it in the same order, but I know my involvement with the sign was, first, it's a recommendation of the comprehensive plan also. Two, and it was very explicit in the plan to supply one sign, you know, by the shopping center advertising our businesses. So we originally started working on, I think it was an easement of sorts with the, with the owner of the shopping center to put up a sign. He never followed through. And so we did. And I think it's beautiful. We had our historic consultant look at it to make sure that architecturally it was in keeping with the shopping center on it. I think it really is. If you stand back and look, it really goes well with it. So far, the businesses seem to be really liking it, and we're kind of having fun with it. Being able to get their logos and stuff, it's amazing what that sign is able to do.
I think they.
So I, no, I think it's going to prove to be a really great tool, not just for our purposes, to advertise our functions, but, you know, things going on in the village.
I think there's some consistency by us because, you know, at times, the shopping center's changed ownership, and we can oversee and make sure that it's used to the benefit of the community. Since we lost the ability to put the banners over the street, those structurally could be repaired, but this is an interactive sign that can be adjusted on the fly. And, you know, that's another way for us to let community aid the pool or whatever's happening. It's a way for us to communicate with the community. So I think it's a good addition.
Yeah. And then my final question. There was a question, I think, in the May Green Hills Journal in regards to the shopping center and what our involvement or ability to update the shopping center could be. I don't know if anybody wants to address that.
Can I go first? Sure. Or you can.
Well, I think a little bit, it's one of those things that's, it's like you wanting to update your house. It's your house. Even though it's a business, what we can do is stay on top of zoning, that kind of thing. We have had, incorrect if I'm wrong, issues where zoning is addressed in a really haphazard way, but it's addressed, knowing that some of those, sorry, some of those things that are being addressed are not going to make it through the winter, for example. But when it's addressed at the time, we can, we have to say it passes. So, you know, as much as I'd love to have, you know, similar to the other green belt community, have a very wealthy patron come in and is a little bit less concerned about the profit side and more concerned about just the whole aesthetic and structure. It's not our property, and we can only go by the zoning and that kind of thing. We can encourage and advertise, and I really like the fact that Yvonne's put the businesses for free now on the digital sign to help them out, given all that's going on. So, but beyond that, it's not under our control.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it.
If somebody was kind enough to give us a couple million or so, we could buy it and then control it.
Right. Yes.
Also, I'll mention on the sign, when you talked about the banner coming down, to put up new poles to support a new banner, it was about half the cost of what the sign was. In addition, we will recover some of the costs of the sign over the years, so through advertising charges. Okay.
Thank you.
Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, no pending legal actions right now and no legislation at state level to speak of that would concern municipalities, so nothing to report.
I do have a question, given the comment drawn, the resident, about we have more capability.
Yeah. I would be happy to address that, actually. That seemed to be focused on someone saying, under the federal telecommunications act, you do have, you're not completely handcuffed. Much of what we've talked about here is not the federal telecommunications act, although it does limit your ability to a certain extent. It's actually Ohio state law that specifically prohibits us from doing much of the things that they've talked about. And as that email mentioned, something about being able to make zoning decisions in a defensible way. The Ohio state law specifically says we don't have any zoning authority with respect to small cell facilities in the right of way. So I appreciate that this individual can help people with respect to the federal telecommunications act. That's a small piece. It's actually the Ohio state law that prohibits much of what we would like to do.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Clerk of Council Tanya Kohler.
No new business.
Okay. Chief of Police Neil Furtman.
Thanks, Mayor. As everyone in the nation and the world knows, it was a very difficult month for law enforcement with regrettable and tragic death of George Forbes in Minneapolis. And I'd like to talk a little bit about how Green Hills is poised to not only respond to that, but actually to discuss some of the things that we've already done to address some of the topics that have been discussed. Green Hills was, had a great deal of foresight back 13 years ago, and this was under the leadership of current Mayor Moore, who at the time was municipal manager, and brought Kalia to Green Hills. Kalia stands for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Incorporated. There are only 5% of law enforcement agencies in the world that are accredited. We've maintained that status since 2007, and it holds us to a very difficult higher standard. It's not just me telling you that the Green Hills Police Department adheres to excellence. It's outside police chiefs from other states that we don't know that come in and essentially do a bank audit, a white glove inspection of the agency. We don't know these folks. They don't know us. They took a look at our policies and procedures and our practices. It's not just what we write down in our policy manual, it's, do we follow our policy manual? And there have to be examples of that, and those examples sometimes are memos, sometimes they're reports, sometimes they're videos and photos. But it's a very extensive inspection, and assessors have repeatedly found that our policies meet their high standards in critical policy areas that include such things as use of force and bios-based policing. We've put additional information about that very stringent process on our website. And in addition to that, we also comply with all of the state's policies that they have developed through the law enforcement collaborative that was developed about three or four years ago. And we've also had assessors come in and assess us on those policies, and we have passed all of those stringent requirements as well. Moving more to a local perspective, as you know, we're still in and coming out to some degree, since we're sitting here, obviously, from the pandemic. Things have been very different over the past couple of months. And one of the things that we did in cooperation with Waycross Media, which is broadcasting us currently, we did a presentation, a video presentation to our residents on how to cope with the pandemic. So there's a company called Aftermath, and they came up with a contest called the Pay It Forward campaign. And what that contest was designed to do was to show how different communities communicated with their citizens and their residents to help them through that difficult time. So since Waycross already produced the video, I went ahead and submitted it to the company, and we were one of 12 departments that were selected nationally as a winner. And our reward was a really good one. We received very professional personal protection kits, also known to police and firefighters as PPEs. So they were better than anything that we had. They didn't cost us anything, and we now have those to use, and some aspects of them will be disposable, so we'll have some spares. And we're very grateful to the company for selecting us and also grateful to Waycross for actually making that possible. In June, we also began use of the Springfield Township impound lot. That's a process that has been seven years in the making. When I first arrived here in Green Hills, Corporal Brian Johnston approached me and said, gosh, why don't we partner with them? And it's gone through the legal process, and it's gone back and forth with different things changed and added. And finally, after all this time, we began a limited use of that lot on June 1. And that does a couple of things for us. Number one, it allows us to store a vehicle there that needs to be processed for evidence or needs to be kept secure rather than going to a private tow lot. And secondly, it allows us, rather than the tow company, to collect the fees and the storage fees, which will be split with Springfield Township. So that was a win-win for us. There'll be a small revenue source that comes in, but also we'll be able to keep the evidence processed with a great deal of integrity since it'll be locked up, secured in a police lot. On May 16, Officer Bacon responded to a call to investigate a person in our A section who was reportedly a danger to himself and to others. When the officer arrived, the person was highly agitated and pacing back and forth, sweating profusely. He displayed sudden changes in his behavior, going from calm to highly agitated. The officer worked with the person to try and get him calmed down. Initially, the officer, or the subject, was very threatening. The officer was able to talk to him and actually persuaded him to be transported to the University of Cincinnati's Medical Center. Unbeknownst to the officer at the time, a neighbor observed the entire incident, and she wrote to us to report what she saw. She said, "I wanted to thank the police officer who talked to the person in front of the street in the A section on Saturday afternoon. The officer was so gentle, patient, and kind as he tried to help him." She noted that the person recently had not been very easy to communicate with and wanted to commend us on how the incident was handled. So Officer Bacon received a commendation from my office, and it in part read, "Your actions reflected our core values of respect, always treating ordinary citizens with extraordinary respect. Each citizen police encounters should foster a feeling of goodwill that extends throughout the community. You did exactly that. As you know, this is counter to what we read and see in our nation currently, but you did it right. You are commended for your exemplary actions. Please keep up the good work." So our hats are off to Officer Bacon for handling that so well. And as a reward to all of us, the United Dairy Farmers brought their ice cream truck to our lot. They asked if they could come at a time when the most police officers and firefighters would be present, and they visited us on June 11. And they brought a large supply of delicious UDF ice cream. I think we probably still have some left in the freezer if you need a treat after the meeting. But they brought, if you want to know the menu, vanilla, chocolate, chocolate chip, raspberry chocolate chip, and orange. So we very much appreciate their kindness in visiting us.
I'm surprised they didn't bring any donuts.
Well, no chili either for the firefighters.
Why's a police department without donuts?
We did have, as I noted at the beginning of my report, living through some difficult times, we did have some protests in Green Hills. They were all very peaceful. During that time, while we were on surveillance, I noted that Officer Clark, who was on bicycle patrol that day, was off in a lot, and there were some kids playing basketball, and the two children, and the officer all had a pretty good time while they were on duty and all played a nice game of basketball. And speaking of Officer Clark, he was one officer who was in training during the past month. He and Officer Rob Lenhoff completed their required biannual recertification from Ohio Leads through RCIC, and that is Law Enforcement Automated Data System through the state and the Regional Crime Information Center through Hamilton County. Officer Eric TriCase is trained as our TASER instructor, and he began the process of recertifying all officers on the proper use of the TASER. All officers received additional training in the past month through the video of the death of George Floyd and the relationship of proper law enforcement policy practices, training, and legal mandates, and we purchased that from Caliber Press. And all officers have completed the first segment in training on essential components of de-escalation and conflict resolution. In terms of statistics, we investigated five accidents, six crimes. We looked into 331 other incidents. We had 732 contacts. 188 of those were dispatched or received by telephone as compared to 309 last May, and 544 of those were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 142 instances. We assisted other agencies 39 times. We made 15 criminal arrests and 20 traffic arrests. And as a closing note, on May 31, Officer Cody Ritchie responded to an area in the A section to investigate a report of a loud party. After he checked the area, he reported the following. Nothing showing except kids playing in the yard. "Nothing showing except kids playing in the yard. I spoke with the group, who told me they would help me catch robbers and fight crime. I gave them all sticker badges and welcomed them to the Green Hills Police Force." So we have a few new recruits. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions to the chief?
I do have one comment. It was also addressed or brought up that the protests are allowed, but the concerts aren't, and that, I mean, do you want to address why that is?
Or luckily.
Well, the law director can step in and help me if he feels it's needed.
Just stated for the residents that are questioning.
The protests are protected speech under the United States Constitution, and that pretty much trumps everything. That's the supreme law of the land. The concerts are actually addressed by a state health director mandate that was signed by, I believe, by the governor, if I'm not mistaken, or by the health director. And there are specific sections in there, and it almost takes a legal training that Mr. Forbes had us interpret that. It took me a while to go through that, but there are specific sections that address concerts, and that's why there's a difference.
Great, thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Forbes?
No, boy, you nailed it.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I've got the mayor's court report for May. St. Wilhaya received $679.50, Hamilton County $22.50, and the Village of Green Hills $3,038.30. And also, I'd like to thank and compliment the police department and the chief for all they've been doing for the last several months with all the issues that we've had to deal with here in town. Also, the fire department and the Villavon and the village staff, and since the municipal building was closed down, we were operating in a limited basis here. Service department was challenged with extra type duties and things such as no two guys in a truck together, you know, we were out chipping brush, one guy in the truck, another following, and the things that we had to go through with this shutdown. And of course, some of it's still continuing, and hopefully it doesn't get worse. Hamilton County receives some bad information as it relates to increased number of cases, and we're still not sure if that'll translate to increased number of hospitalizations and/or deaths, but there's some speculation. Some of it is they're doing more testing, so that's uncovering more things. But I think the village staff and all the people that take care of us here have done a good job, and hopefully we all get back up to full steam later on, since this is our first real televised council meetings since our Zooming. So that's all I have. Committee reports, community development. Jeff Holder.
Yes, confession that I missed the community development today, but recreation and cable television. I've been teaching online for the last two days solid, and had a number of students saying, "Oh, can I ask you this?", and I just kept going, and I looked down at my phone, and an hour and a half after the meeting was over, "Are you coming?", and the answer is no. So I'm guilty of missing two meetings that I helped set up, and I apologize for that. But we've reset up another meeting for June 30th, Tuesday, at 2:00 for community development, and I would assume we would do recreation at 2:30.
Thank you, yes.
Sorry to report that I have nothing to report.
Okay, all right. Recreation cable television. Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention a few things on my list. Harvest Fest at the moment, still tentatively on. We're still waiting on any direction to see if we're allowed to have the Harvest Fest, but at this moment, we are moving forward with getting vendors, getting music, all of that. As soon as we get any go-ahead with the state, then we can give a solid yes, we're on, no, we're not. So again, that's still in limbo. Same thing with the calendar events and the concert on the commons. At the moment, things are supposed to be lifted. I believe you said on July 1st, but there's potential that it could be extended further, so everything's still in limbo. That being said, the pool days, the appreciation day has been canceled. However, we are working on a process to show appreciation to those members, so that's still to be determined. Something will happen to show appreciation to our members, but it won't be in an actual event day of. If anybody has any recommendations for Waycross as far as videos to highlight in the village or get some information out there to the residents, please let me know, and I'll pass it on to Waycross, and we can start getting more of a presence out there online. So that's all I have.
I have a couple of statements. I do not see the dates of the Waycross listed on the calendar, and they were listed in the past, so I don't know how many of them they didn't have because of the coronavirus or if they have started already or they are virtual or not, so I didn't know any of that.
You mean the Waycross meetings?
Yes.
The one that was scheduled during coronavirus was actually canceled, yeah.
Okay, so we haven't had any, okay. Second, there was some, I've been gravitating, pool is my life, to do laps and swimming, so I have been gravitating to see how it's working out and all that. Overall, it has been working well. I had very positive comments, and to thank the village administration and the pool staff for working the things that they have to go through to make it work. There was only one complaint, and it was not a complaint, it was just if we can repair a little bit or tweak, I guess that's the right word, what we are doing, and that is that a lot of our residents and their members on the pool, they are letting, coming in like for the non-reservation line, online type of thing, and then they come over and they can't get in, even though they're members, they can't get in because there are X amount of numbers of those reservations, I guess, that have been taken by people that are coming in from other areas. And the big question is that they have was, number one, if perhaps there could be some kind of arrangement, because it seems that it's very heavily attended on weekends, like on Saturdays or Sundays. And when they come in, they stand in line for the waiting in period, they stand in line, and then somebody comes in, and it's not from the village, but it's ahead of them, and there are four or five or six people in that group, and then they have to go back home. And this particular person said that she has gone back home, the two times that was or whatever it was, in the morning at 12:00, and the one in the afternoon on Saturday and on Sunday. And then also, the other question was if we were still planning, because they, a group of people enjoyed very, very much that we had the pool open in August after the, you know, to get to the weekend of Labor Day instead of like we used to close before that, if that was still an option for this year, and that they very much would appreciate it if that could be done. But they were very complimentary of all the staff on the pool and actually for everything that administration has done to make this possible for opening. Go ahead, Mel.
Thank you. In answer to the first part of that, we've tweaked it a lot of times. We've had a lot of input. I'm a little hesitant right now to make more changes. It's just a really difficult situation to hit on the right mix, but based on what we went through the first couple of weeks, I think we might be there. And also, you know, just because they're standing in line doesn't mean they're a member. You know, there's a non-member, you know, again, there are members who are in the line as well, so I don't want members to think just because of the walk-ins getting in, those are all non-members. They're not necessarily nonmembers. Does that make sense? See what I mean, like?
Yeah, walk-ins may be members or non-members.
Maybe they're members as well.
If a member's not getting in, and they look at that line and think, "Wow, I should be able to get in." Those may be members too, so we do take memberships from outside of the community, so they could still be outside the community and be members.
Okay, and the traffic is bound to be high with our pool because the ones surrounding us aren't open.
Correct.
And so in order, I mean, we want to appeal to as many people as possible.
Correct. And with the sessions, we've, you know, had to really cut back on capacity, which is unfortunate, but I just keep looking forward to next year, hoping this is all behind us. No more scheduling, just come enjoy it.
Well, and also with somebody that had made the reservation for the lane or for the time or whatever it was, the period of time, and was late arriving, and was not allowed to enter.
Yep. Okay, well, we did a couple of weeks ago, that was an issue, and we did put out an email, can be generated, and I think it is also on the reminder email that they receive now that, you know, if you're not there within 15 minutes, that your reservation will be given away, just to remind people that.
Okay.
Reason being, you know, you'd have people in line, it was obvious you weren't at capacity because people didn't show up.
Yeah.
And you hated to not let them in, so we did set a time and found a way to inform them.
And then not showing up.
Right, and then not showing up, so it has really been a learning process.
Yeah.
You know, we do apologize for any inconvenience, but we, I think we've done the best we can do, and again, we're really looking forward to not having to do this again. What was the second part of that?
Well, that reminds me also, the two-hour slot, there were people that were saying it was too short. That is not something that we mandate, like it's based on cleaning schedule and a need to clean the pool after a certain amount of time.
Yeah, I think that's understood with most of the people, because they see, they step out, they have to do, and they have to do the cleaning afterwards in between. But the one particular case, I was there, because I've been going there every time that I can, pass by, and I talk to everybody, "How is it going? Can we help you? Is there anything you want us to do?", especially when they had someone that is going through the moment or the motions at that time that is not allowed in. So that was the concern that they had brought in, that some people, they're coming late, and then somebody else had taken the spot, and that's very hard to deal with. I don't know if it would be besides what you were doing of advertising that and putting it on the website and all of that, if there could be maybe a little sign put in there.
Well, the email goes directly to the person making the reservation.
They make the reservation.
They give confirmation email, and then they get a reminder email.
Okay, and that just went on this weekend, then?
No, no, we've been doing that for a couple of weeks now.
Okay, all right.
I would also say that whenever possible, we need to defer to our residents. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
But I will, if I'm not mistaken, given the demographics and the change here in the village, if it wasn't for outside membership, that would be, you know, that's helping us to keep the pool going. So this is a most unusual circumstance, and I think you guys have adapted a lot. It doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to adapt, but hopefully we'll get back to normal come the summer.
And to remind people also that the state grant that we got that paid for a big chunk of redoing the pool was granted on the assumption that we offered the pool to all people, not just residents.
And is there any thoughts or answers about the fact of extending the extra week or two weeks?
Oh, that was the other part.
Okay.
Yes, and I will be talking to Swim Safe about that. It's just these first weeks have been so complex and on their part, and for us to, you know, get it all situated, that we will be having discussion of. I'm sure I would know by our next meeting, if not sooner.
All right, thank you so much.
Service and Streets, Jennifer Ozman.
And her government office.
What? Did I miss? Oh, yes, I missed Maria. Forgot.
I've been talking a lot. Yeah, I've heard my voice for so long that, yeah. We had the laws and rules committee today, and we discussed the facilities and of rules and regulations, et cetera, and we also discussed business registration legislation for that. And we are, we're going to confirm on August the 7th, no, pardon me. Yes, August the 11th, which is the work session in August, whether or not we are going to have a laws and rules committee meeting on August the 25th at 5:30. If there is anything that we need to discuss or work out, we will have it, and if not, we'll just postpone it to the next time that we need to get together. And that's my report. Thank you.
Great. All right, moving on now back to Service and Streets. Jennifer Ozman.
Thank you. We had a meeting on Wednesday, June 3rd, and the main topic of discussion was the sidewalk repair. And I had a personal incident with the sidewalks, which makes me very excited that they're getting repaired. But I was walking with my mom, and it was darker, and she tripped. I said, "Mom, watch the, you know, sidewalk", and she tripped and cut her foot open, and then we had a bloody flip-flop and a big mess walking around on Damon Road. But so, I walk enough around Green Hills that I see that, you know, it's a definite need, for sure. So anyway, we looked at, we talked about the budget, and they're going to fill it in, or we're going to do it in five phases, and then we should have one this year. We should be able to do one this year.
Yes.
But it's a significant cost doing the shaving rather than just replacing everything, so.
Significant cost savings.
I was shaving, sorry. It's a lot cheaper. That's all I have.
Okay. Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance and Audit Committee met on June 3rd to review the first draft copy of the 2021 tax budget. That moved out of committee and was subject to a public meeting here on June 9th with council present, and that will be moving on as a resolution for us to approve tonight so that we can submit that by the end of the month as we are required to. That's really all the comments I have at this point. Thanks.
Safety, Melanie Armis.
Yes, thank you. We met today for our committee, and one of the things we talked about is how a lot of police departments, the concerns that other police departments have had to address. We have been meeting these concerns for years with our Kalia accreditation, so I am proud of the chief and our department for having that process already in place with the training, with the procedures that they already have and the stuff that they are doing. They haven't had to be reactive because they've been proactive in their training and their policing in the community. The community-oriented policing that the Green Hills Police Department puts forth is to be highly recognized and congratulated, and I do want to thank the men and women of our police department for meeting these higher standards that other departments should aspire to achieve. Some of the stuff we did talk about was the accreditation process and how it might be slightly different right now during the COVID-19 and the pandemic, having some more virtual meetings and fewer in-person meetings, and that's going to be going forward this year. So the chief is doing a wonderful job of coordinating and keeping us informed. One of the other things we talked about is the partnerships that the Green Hills Police Department has with our surrounding communities. We currently partner with Forest Park for the Kids Police Academy, which unfortunately just had recently begun before the stay-at-home orders had been put in place, but that was something that the Green Hills Police Department was running along with the Forest Park Department. We also mentioned that we have had citizens' police academies through the Green Hills Police Department in the past, and I mentioned, and we discussed, having possibly partnering with Forest Park as well, since we're partnering with them for the kids academy, seeing if there's ways to utilize our police department and their police department to be community-oriented with both Green Hills and Forest Park to get the respect and interaction between all of our residents and our departments, and how that would be a great partnership to have. I know sometimes in Green Hills, we have fewer residents, so it's harder to come up with a full class size, whereas Forest Park is larger, so there's sometimes to be able to utilize both residents to be able to come up with a full class size. He also, as he mentioned in his report, we partner with Springfield Township. We utilize their impound lot to help with our needs as well. And then, in lots of situations, we're also neighbors to the Parks, the Park District, the greater Cincinnati Park District, Great Parks, and that we have a great relationship with them as well. So I think one of the things the Green Hills Department is very good about is partnering with other departments, having a strong emphasis on respect for all parties, and I am glad and happy to endorse and support our police department and their endeavors. So thank you, Chief Furman. We did talk about next meetings. Our next meeting will be before, potentially before the August 25th meeting. Along with laws and rules, we will confirm on August 11th the need and the agenda for that meeting as well. Any questions?
I actually want, did you, Chief mentioned that only 5% of
I actually want to, Chief mentioned that only 5% across the United States are CLEA certified?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Holber.
I didn't realize how rare this is and how important it is. Hopefully more will join that path.
We're very thrilled that all of the surrounding agencies are either already accredited or in the process. Springfield Township, Springdale, for example, us, and Forest Park is due for their onsite. At the same time, we're scheduled to have assessors here at the end of the year.
And that's an annual thing and it's been done, or is it thorough?
It has varied from three to four years. It's just moved to four years. However, they've taken advantage of technology, and we do an annual, not an onsite assessment, but basically a web-based assessment.
I remember it being very, very thorough and could understand how you couldn't, I don't know if you could keep that up, you know, month after month, meaning the certification, year after year with the certification. So.
Well, I think sometimes there may be some question as to, you know, how busy do we stay? We never stop because if it isn't Lieutenant, it's me. And we also have our police clerk in as our accreditation team. So we're always looking for proofs of compliance to show that we have achieved those standards. So that's never-ending. But it's also very important to really prove that we're not only talking the talk but walking the walk.
Thank you.
When we first got into this, we were one of the very few for the size that we were to get into this. And it was really a big job. We basically hired a police chief simply because he had secured that for a larger department that he was in and worked on that to accomplish it here. Took a lot of work.
It's been 13 years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. New business? Unfinished business? None? New business? We have a resolution, number 2020-10-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a note, this is regarding the appropriations from 2020 fiscal year. Resolution 2020-10-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Whereas the 2020 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 10th, 2019, are to be amended. And whereas the appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code 5705.36A5. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested by the County Budget Commission. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1. Since certain actions are needed and the money is appropriated so to permit the village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2020, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditures for the year 2020. Fund description, other capital projects funds, number 4901. Appropriation was for $14,710.64. The change addition, $322,571.48, for a total of $337,282.12. Section 2, that from the following transfer of funds be made from the previously appropriated monies from none to none and no amount. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Do you want to comment?
Sure. I'd love to. Because this probably looks a little strange, but what's going on? This is the Wood and Road project. And when council first, first, a lot of it is OPWC, it's a loan. And second, when we did the initial appropriation, we did not even know Water Works was going to be in the picture. So what you're seeing here is money we received from Water Works to go towards third portion of the project. We had a small balance in there that it's being added to that amount for the total of the $337. You will see little pieces coming and going frequently as we get different grant funding, and we will be getting more money from Water Works. For some reason, this time they opted to pay it as we get invoiced for it, rather than, in the past, they've always sent the whole amount. But so you're going to be seeing some of these, maybe two more at least from Water Works.
Nice though.
Yeah. Not our money, so that's a good thing. But we have to get into our appropriations. So.
Clerk Callahan, roll.
Walther? I mean, Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Moore? Oh, sorry.
Would if I could. Okay. Resolution number 2020-10-F passes. Next resolution is 2020-11-F, Resolution Accepting the Green Hills 2021 Tax Budget. Mr. Lee.
And I like the look of this resolution. It should have more of this size.
Yeah.
Resolution number 2020-11-F, Resolution Accepting the Green Hills 2021 Tax Budget. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the Council of the Village of Green Hills accepts the 2021 tax budget as prepared by the municipal manager and finance director attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It moved in second. Any questions? Comments?
I appreciate Deb Hymer's and Yvonne Kovak's hard work on this. They've been terrific here lately, watching every nickel, dime, penny. The May financial figures, the income looked horrible, but the expenditures made up, the lack of expenditures made up the difference. So, you know, it's going to be an interesting year in 2020 and 21. So, thanks.
All right.
No, we need to vote.
We need to vote.
Clerk Callahan, roll.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number 2020-11-F passes. Next one, Resolution number 2020-12-F, Resolution Declaring It Necessary to Levy a Tax in Excess of the 10-mil Limitation and Submitting Such Levy to the Electors. It's recreation levy, and it will be a renewal, and you get to read it longer.
Do you like the size of that one?
Yes.
You spoke too fast.
Yeah, I did. I knew that going in. Resolution 2020-12-F, Resolution Declaring It Necessary to Levy a Tax in Excess of the 10-mil Limitation and Submitting Such Levy to the Electors, Recreation Levy. Whereas the village council desires to continue to provide the residents of Green Hills with necessary governmental services. And whereas, in order to continue to provide services to the residents of the community, the village council is determined that it is necessary to renew the current recreation levy of the village as authorized by 5705.19H of the Ohio Revised Code for recreational purposes. Whereas, the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10-mil limitation will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. And whereas, the Hamilton County Auditor has certified to the village that the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the levy of tax at a rate not exceeding 0.70 mils for each $1 valuation equals $36,631, based upon the total estimated tax valuation of the village of $53,660. And whereas, the village council desires to submit the 0.70 mil renewal recreation levy to the electors of the village at the general election to be held November 3rd, 2020. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected heretofore concurring. Section 1, that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mils limitations for the benefit of the Village of Green Hills pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.19H for recreational purposes at a rate not exceeding 0.70 mils for each $1 valuation, which amounts to seven cents for each $100 valuation for five years, which is a levy renewal of 0.70 mils. Section 2, that the question of the renewal levy be submitted to the electors of said Village of Green Hills at the November election to be held at the usual voting places within said Village of Green Hills on the third day of November 2020. Section 3, that said levy be placed upon the tax list of the current year after the February settlement next succeeding the election if a majority of the voters voting therein, thereon, vote in favor thereof. Section 4, that the clerk of the Village of Green Hills be and is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Board of Elections, Hamilton County, Ohio, and notify said Board of Elections that to cause notice of election on the question of levying said tax to be given as required by law. Section 5, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution be adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 6, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments?
Just to highlight a couple of issues here. Again, this particular levy generates $36,631 for the village on an annual basis. What this means to the individual taxpayers, based upon $100,000 market value, the homeowner pays $20.83 a year for this, or $10.40 half. And that's the exact same amount that they've been paying previously, and it is a five-year renewal. And some of the funding that has, that these funds have gone toward in the recent past, the sidewalk repairs at Big Burley Park, partial funding for the new restroom facility at the picnic area. It pays for park maintenance items such as playground mulch. It greatly supports pool operations. It pays for the one-call system that we all enjoy. And it does go to fun events like the annual community days at the pool, Harvest Fair, and Light Up Green Hills. So it's money well spent, and it does increase quality of life within the village.
Okay. Clerk Callahan, roll.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number 2020-12-F passes. Okay. I lost my sheet. Do we have anything else?
Calendar.
Calendar.
Anything?
June 30th, 2:00, Recreation.
Hope to see you all there.
Fingers crossed.
Laws and Rules, 6 o'clock on August 25th.
Tentatively. Safety, same day, 5:30. Tentatively.
That's it. We'll return.